Okay, welcome everyone and thank you for coming today. I'm Colleen Dettlemeyer, the Illinois Heartland Library System Delivery and Facilities Director, and I'm co-presenting today with our Executive Director, Leslie Bednar. We have our Continuing Education Coordinator, Kate Kite, monitoring the chat for questions. We would like to review the presentation as a whole, and then we will hold a question and answer session towards the end. And if there's not enough time to answer one of your questions specifically, please feel free to reach out to me directly. I ask that everyone will turn off their camera to ensure their microphone is muted to ensure the best possible experience. All right, let's get things started. What we'll cover today: The Factors Impacting Delivery Turnaround, The Solutions We've Identified, The Future of Delivery Outlook, and Action Items for Our Member Libraries. Now I will turn it over to Leslie for some clarifications.
Thank you, Colleen. And good morning and thanks to all of you for taking the time to meet with us today and learn more about where we are at this point in our journey. The first thing we want to do is to provide some clarifications on a few items. Functional five-day delivery is a service offered to all IHLS member libraries at no cost to them through their free system membership. If we have an item for your library, or you have an item for pickup, we will come to you. We only know that you have an item... We only know, excuse me, that you have a pickup by notifications on the help desk. Some libraries have chosen to reduce the number of days that IHLS provides this service due to days that the library is closed between our delivery dates. For example, if the library is closed on Tuesday, IHLS staff should not come to your library on Tuesday when you will not process items until Wednesday. If you want to request additional days or change your delivery frequency, message us on the help desk. Some libraries are pre-scheduled for functional five-day-per-week pickup and delivery, while other libraries have opted for on-demand delivery. On-demand means we will only come to your library when you have requested a pickup on the help desk or when we have an item for you. You will not have a specific day of the week predetermined for your pickup or delivery. In summary, functional five-day means your library has a scheduled number of days you have chosen for your delivery. And on-demand means we will only come to you when you request it or if we have an item for you. If you want to request additional days or change your delivery frequency, message us on the help desk. Some items can be delivered to patrons even faster with our Delivery on the Go service. Delivery on the Go enables items to be delivered to the receiving library the very same day when those items are requested from an up-route library. You can use the IHLS website listing of hubs and routes to determine which libraries you can send items via Delivery on the Go. It is helpful to print a list of libraries that are down route from your library. When you are filling hold requests, if it is a library down route, then you can use the orange bags and fill out the information. The only way an IHLS driver knows it's a same-day item is if it is in the orange bag. SHARE is the largest automation consortium in North America. SHARE's expenses are paid for by the SHARE fund, and that is supported by SHARE member fees. No portion of SHARE member fees are used to pay for IHLS delivery. SHARE membership includes the ability to to share the cost of purchasing an integrated library system, or ILS, which is the Polaris website, the SHARE app, and more. Technical support and training. In Southern and Central Illinois, the Illinois Heartland Library System is the heart of interlibrary delivery, providing pickup, sorting, and delivery of library items at no cost to our members. We also facilitate the transport of interlibrary loan items from IHLS member libraries to RAILS and ILDS libraries and back again. IHLS delivery drivers are on the road Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to get items in the hands of your patrons sooner. In summary, SHARE is a computer and cataloging portion of interlibrary loan, and delivery is the physical transportation of all loaned materials. Delivery is provided to all IHLS member libraries free of charge. And SHARE is a paid membership to utilize the shared ILS. Funding for Illinois library systems is provided by the Illinois State Library and the Illinois Secretary of State from revenue appropriated by the Illinois General Assembly or granted under the Federal Library Services and Technology Act. Per capita funding is determined after each 10-year census with the next review in 2031. This means that IHLS' current funding will remain flat until FY 2031. IHLS does not have the ability to tax levy for additional revenue. What are the factors impacting delivery turnaround? There are several factors that impact delivery turnaround times, and I will discuss each topic on the next few slides. Even though you are on a route list with a set list of libraries, the functional five-day-a-week and on-demand delivery means that the number of stops on each route will be different every day. There might be five stops before your library on Monday, 12 stops on Tuesday, and seven on Wednesday. The delivery time will vary each day of the week based on items circulated through delivery for each library on your route. IHLS member libraries should expect a four-day window for delivery times. Wonderfully, there has been an increase in the number of items sent through IHLS delivery. IHLS staff estimate that sorting has increased 30% over last fiscal year. This is 783,000 additional items over last year. The average staff member for IHLS can sort 350 to 450 items per hour. The more items that are sent through delivery, the more sorting hours are required in our budget. IHLS staff did not adequately predict the number of sorting hours needed in our current budget. And therefore, we do not have enough sorters to process the materials. As circulation continues to increase, the number of sorting hours will have to continue to increase as well, all with our flat funding until 2031. The number-two complaint in the IHLS delivery survey was the number of items received for another library. We are all human, and we all make mistakes. But sorting an item to the wrong IHLS hub causes a multiple-day delay in your patron receiving their materials. With weather issues aside, we have had challenges with last-minute driver call-ins, drivers out for COVID quarantine, staff out with workers' comp, and quite a bit of turnover due to staff retiring or deciding this was not the job for them. When there are early-morning call-ins, it's quite a challenge to swap drivers on routes at 5:00 a.m. to make sure that the driver knows the route and the alarm and delivery locations. We are limited to 1,000 annually or 19 hours per week on part-time positions before they would be required to participate with IMRF. In order to ensure that does not occur, we must monitor part-time staffing hours. This IMRF requirement limits which staff can be called for fill-ins. With our employees out on workers' comp, we have employed temporary sorters through staffing agencies. We are currently transitioning to full-time drivers, and as we make this transition, it has become difficult to manage the right balance of the number of staff needed for time off. Currently, in our Edwardsville hub, we only have two part-time drivers that can fill in. So when a full-time driver is out and the two part-time staff cannot work, we do not have alternatives for fill-ins besides our supervisors. The Champagne and Carbondale hub have not yet transitioned to full-time drivers and have not fully experienced this issue yet. As more long-tenure, part-time staff leave these hubs, we will be better prepared for solutions as this occurs. When IHLS needs to cancel a route, this can also contribute to delays. Whether it's a long holiday weekend, closure due to our winter weather guidelines, or a staffing-related cancellation, IHLS delivery staff are trying their very best and working long hours to ensure your patrons receive their materials. Some libraries have asked why we have closed for weather that does not appear to be bad in their city. Please keep in mind that IHLS routes cover 28,000 square miles every day. When weather affects multiple cities on our route, it makes it difficult to navigate delivery. Based on the high number of claims in our vans, it was recommended to develop weather closure guidelines to follow when IHLS would close for weather. Since our day route drivers at each hub start as early as 5:00 a.m. and return at 2:00 p.m. or later, the weather during that entire day shift must be considered if a route can operate. Yet there is a late start, then we will not be able to make it back in time for the night shift to make their exchange of items, which also creates delays in other hubs and across the state. In the past, we have tried to operate in these conditions, and we have had accidents, vans off in the ditch, staff injured in member library parking lots, and staff who call off because they couldn't get out of their driveway. We've also attempted delivery and found that sometimes more than 25% of our member libraries were closed as well due to the weather. Due to all these factors, our weather closure guidelines will continue to be in place. And now, it is my honor to turn this back to Colleen.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, here are the summary of some of the solutions that we have identified. I will discuss each one of these solutions in greater detail on the next few slides. An increased communication to our member libraries. Making sure the same route isn't canceled. Cross-training drivers on multiple routes. A new floater position that will start next fiscal year. Adding an additional full-time staff member for fill-ins that will start next fiscal year. Temporary sorters. Pulling staff from other departments to help with the sorting process. Requiring a new minimum hours, number of hours, and availability for all sorting staff. And the purchase of an automated materials handling system. We have recently received comments from member libraries that they were unaware that we were closed or a delay had occurred. IHLS staff will only notify you if the delivery is later than the normal four-hour time window or if we are canceling a route. Please make sure that you are subscribed to the system alerts and all the staff who that process your delivery materials at your library is also subscribed. We have two methods for these alerts: text and email. For our weather-related closures, we will do our very best to determine the weather closures prior to 8:00 p.m. the evening before or 6:00 the morning of. If a route call-off occurs, these notifications will tend to go out later in the day because we want to ensure that all the staff that are not working that day cannot work prior to calling the shift canceled. Sometimes we are waiting a few hours to ensure that all the staff have had an opportunity to reply. We can only cancel the route when there are no other alternatives. If cancellation is due to COVID quarantine on a full-time staff member that works five days in a week, the hub supervisor will try to rotate drivers on fill-ins so that the same route would not be canceled two days in a row. We are working to train drivers on multiple routes so that we have better coverage in all routes. But as many of our tenure employees have retired from the system, that has left many new staff that do not know multiple routes. While it may seem simple enough to just send a driver on a route, there are many specifics for each library to know: the placement of the delivery shipment, which key to use at which library, the alarm codes, the entry details, and even the location of where the library is and how to learn. That can take a day or two sometimes. When IHLS drivers are provided with route details, many of these specifics are hard to know by just reading a book. As we continue to need additional drivers, it makes it more difficult to have extra drivers to cross-train on more routes. We are planning to add a floater position in next year's budget. This floater position will learn all routes and will be available for fill-ins and last-minute call-offs. We are also planning to add an eighth full-time driver for the seven daily routes in Edwardsville. So this position can assist with route fill-ins and also help with the sorting. We have been utilizing a staffing agency to help with our sorting backlogs in the Edwardsville hub. Unfortunately, we have utilized our full budget for temporary staff and can no longer use this as an option. We are asking staff from all IHLS departments to assist with sorting as their workloads allow. We have developed a new minimum hours and availability for all of our sorting staff. This has unfortunately caused more staff turnover, but we are hopeful that with the new availability, this will allow for the most efficient sorting process. And it's also looking more and more like we actually need an automated material handling system rather than a wand. The benefits will far outweigh the cost, and I will review more details about the Automated Material Handling System next. What is an Automated Material Handling System? It's a tool, or a system of tools, that removes the need for a manual interaction to check in, check out, move, or sort materials. I'm going to play... oops, that didn't work. I was going to play a short clip, but I don't think it's linked correctly. I'm sorry, inside of our PowerPoint. But it would be a short video from our St. Louis County branch site visit, and you can see that video right on our website with the Automated Material Handling System. I'll be sure to share that link. Okay, there are many potential benefits for our member libraries. And what are they? There might be a long-term cost savings for share member libraries. And that means that the Automated Material Handling System can route items with barcodes instead of labels, thus saving libraries miles of receipt paper tape annually. We will have a receipt paper savings calculator posted on our website soon for you to calculate your library savings. There will be a faster turnaround in delivery time after weekends and holidays. IHLS sorting staff will be able to sort heavy loads such as those due to holidays or weekends in a single day versus multiple days, therefore eliminating many of our backlogs. There will be more accurate sorting. While the mis-sorting isn't common every day, it does happen. And when the item is sent to a wrong library in another hub, this means it could be a week before the item ends up in the hands of a patron. The Automated Material Handling System would further reduce this occurrence. We would have pandemic-resistant sorting. With the low-touch nature of the Automated Material Handling System, it would make a disruption of future pandemics or similar emergencies far less likely. We would have more accurate data tracking and statistics. The Automated Material Handling System will allow for the item's status to be automatically updated in Polaris. This would allow the library to know exactly where their item is in the transit journey. There's also a potential for sorting holds and returns and branch-level sorting for our share member libraries. These are features that IHLS will need to determine feasibility on. But chair members could elect to have their holds versus returns sorted in separate bins or branch-level sorting on behalf of your library at the system level. This would allow for member libraries' staff sort time to also be reduced. There are also some potential benefits to IHLS. There's reduced long-term operating costs to IHLS. Personnel costs... excuse me, I have to cough for just a second. All right, personnel costs would be reduced through decreased total staff hours needed. This would likely be accomplished by attrition-related staff reductions. Our biggest concern is the staff turnover here at IHLS. We have frequently rehired in replacement sorters in over the last 18 months of our 11 sorter positions across the IHLS hubs. We have lost and needed to retrain one sorter on average for every two months. There's a definite cost to IHLS for that: about $1,000 a sorter for onboarding costs and the administration as well as training. This does not include the termination cost. There'd be a faster delivery turnaround after holidays and weekends. There'd be an increased efficiency through increased speed. The number of items sorted per hour can be much higher, helping staff ensure that all items are sorted every day. The typical machine can sort on average about 2,000 items per hour. And the current IHLS manual sorting can sort from 350 to 450 items per hour. We would also have a reduced likelihood of chronic injury. Sorting bins can be adjusted to the employee's heights, and this would provide a safer, ergonomically ingestible workstation for our staff, preventing injuries and workers' compensation claims. And there will be no major changes to our current infrastructure. The machines that we are considering would require one single outlet and one data cable. This means that IHLS would not need to undergo any major changes to install these machines. One vendor reports that their machine at peak operation uses less than half of the energy used by a typical hair dryer. But is it worth it? How much will it cost IHLS? How much will it cost member libraries? And how long will it take to see a return on investment? In fall of 2022, based on the request for information responses received, we learned that the cost could range between $250,000 and $500,000 for the unit at the Edwardsville location, depending on the vendor that was selected. The RFP we have currently released allows us to determine exact cost for an Automated Material Handling System for all three of our delivery hubs. IHLS member libraries do not pay a fee to be a member of IHLS. Therefore, members would not see any fees related to the purchase or the operation of the Automated Material Handling System. We do not plan for any portion of these costs of the Automated Material Handling System to be passed along to our share member libraries either, as SHARE would not be paying for the Automated Material Handling System IHLS one. Are there other costs? The only possible cost would be if re-barcoding or barcode duplication would be required. This is if and only if libraries are share members, they have items on the inside of their materials, and they do not have an RFID tag. The barcodes must be on the outside of the item if you do not have RFID tags. And if those items are circulated outside of your library. We will not need to re-barcode or duplicate barcodes on items only as they are circulated outside of your library. IHLS staff are currently evaluating how many libraries this will affect. Some libraries have indicated that they would like the help of IHLS staff to do the barcode duplication. And some libraries have indicated that they would like to borrow the duplicators themselves and have their staff accomplish this task. We have heard positive reviews from libraries in other states that have utilized these barcode duplicators. There will be a survey sent to our share member libraries about the barcode duplication process sent soon. Please be on the lookout on the next few days and complete this survey as soon as possible. How will IHLS pay for this? We are currently evaluating grants that we may be able to apply for, and we also have a general fund reserve balance that we will use. How long will it take us to see a return on investment? The return on investment will be calculated by IHLS finance and operations staff once the request for proposal costs have been received. Their current return on investment is around seven years, but the Automated Material Handling System typical lifespan can be 10 to 15 years, while some Automated Material Handling System customers have reported their machines still in full operation nearing 20 years. Where are we at in the process? The first stage was to do staff research and issue the request for information to determine what it would look like at the Edwardsville hub. And the second stage, we brought in our member libraries to form an Automated Material Handling Working Group. This was to do more research on the member library needs and the actual machine capabilities. Then the decision was made to move forward on issuing the request for proposal so we could determine exact costs. We are currently in stage three, and I will review more details on the next slide. In October, we began working with the consultant to write the request for proposal. This includes circulation data analysis, AMH implementation plans, the RFP development itself, and then communications with vendors and site visits with the vendors. In January, we posted the request for proposal. In March this month, we will post the barcode duplicator and paper savings calculators on our website, and we will also send the barcode duplication survey to our share members. And we will also open the sealed bins. In April, the results of the request for proposal will be posted, and the return on investment will be completed. In May, our Automated Material Handling System will be presented to our Board of Directors for their final decision. IHLS Delivery Outlook. What should you expect from IHLS delivery in the near future and beyond? Turnaround times on patron requests may get worse before they get better. With the newly implemented minimum sorting hours and recent staff resignations, we are expecting a delay to continue in the next month. In July, we are hopeful that the new budget, with the new budget, we can hire additional staff to assist with some of our current challenges. If the IHLS board approves the purchase of the Automated Material Handling System, we can expect implementation of the first machine to begin in fall of 2024. This means that the barcode duplication process will need to begin as soon as the board's decision has been made. The first install will occur at the Edwardsville hub, and then approximately 90 days later, the second install would occur at the Champagne hub, and then the third install would occur at the Carbondale hub. Even though the machines will be staged implementation periods, the barcodes will need to be moved to ensure they are ready for machine use. Looking forward, as the machines are implemented at each IHLS hub, the turnaround time for patron materials will be greatly increased. Turnaround times on member library materials at the same IHLS hub should be next day, and delivery between two IHLS hubs should be within two days. If IHLS board decides not to implement the Automated Material Handling System, you should expect patron material delays to continue. Since our budget is flat funding until 2031, IHLS will eventually not have the budget to continue to add sorters as circulation increases. What are the action items for our member libraries? Please ensure that you're using the help desk to send us communications. Whether you need more tubs, you want to change your delivery frequency, or you have a question. The help desk is the best way to reach out to I H L S's delivery staff. If the situation is emergent, please call us. Make sure you and the appropriate staff are signed up for the delivery alerts. Take the automated material handling barcode duplication survey by next Friday, March 15th, if possible. I realize this will be a quick turnaround time, but we're doing our best to gather information to calculate that return on investment before April. And we will get the survey sent as soon as possible. Make sure you are not overfilling the tubs. This can cause the old-style tubs to break sooner. And if tubs are filled over 40 pounds, this can also contribute to the number of working, workers' compensation claims that occur, which can cause further delays. Soon, we will also be posting the savings calculator on our website. And we need volunteers to help provide examples of the estimated savings. Please use these calculators and share your results with I H L S staff. There'll be a link on the website as well to show those results. You won't have to email us. If you are a share member and barcodes are placed on the outside of your items and you do not have RFID. Be prepared to address this by this fall. If I H L S board votes to purchase the machines in May. If you are interested in helping, if you have questions or concerns, please reach out to us. There is an entire section on the I H L S website dedicated to the automated material handling system project. And for the delivery guidelines, help desk, to see what hubs you're on and then any news or resources. Thank you. Alright, I'm going to end this PowerPoint presentation then and we can open it up for questions.
Colleen, this is Kate. Do you want me to go back through the chat? And ask some of the questions that came up earlier?
That would be great if you want to do that, yes.
So, going back. So Rick asked at, does this mean, there were a lot of questions about sorting and the drivers and kind of staffing with that, so that's gonna be the first part. Does this mean that drivers and sorters are not enrolled in IMRF, thus the restriction on hours?
All, the full-time drivers are, the part-time are not. So historically, we only had part-time drivers. And we've recently made the transition to start having full-time drivers. And so as we're transitioning to full-time, all the full-time do have IMRF, but the part-timers do not. So, and a lot of our part-timers are long-tenured and do not wish to go full-time. So those are the people that are available for the fill-ins. And then we only have a limited number of days they can fill in because of the IMRF requirements.
So, and then this is about closures. Does the closure plan created include if there's an accident that drivers come upon where traffic is completely stopped? They mentioned that recently there was an accident that shut down a route and did not get any delivery. And they also did not receive any notification.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that you didn't receive a notification. We're trying our best to make sure anytime there's a delay that there's, or a closure that a notification is sent. The winter, we only developed closure guidelines to do specifically with weather. Because a lot of the claims and accidents that have occurred are to do with weather-related closures. So that does not have anything in that guideline that we've developed to do with specific road closures, no.
What is the starting hourly pay for the driver and the sorters?
Okay, the current starting pay for sorters is $14 an hour. That will increase to $15 an hour with the next budget due to the minimum wage. And then the current starting pay for drivers is $15.68.
What are the typical hours of work for a sorting position? Are there weekend hours?
We do not have weekend hours since I H L S is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. We have in the past asked sorters to come in on the weekends to help with delays. A lot of times, people are not available. They already have prior commitments. So it's not something we currently do right now. The court, the current sorting hours, it just kind of depends. We have kind of two shifts. We have one sorter at each hub that comes in to process what we call those inter-hub items. So each night, all of our, we have each hub meet in the Champagne hub. And they also meet with Rails libraries as well. And we do that exchange for the statewide ILDS items as well as the Illinois Heartland Library System inter-hub items. So Edwardsville brings their items, Carbondale brings their items, and we all swap them in Champagne and then they bring them back. So then we have a sorter come in, starting earlier in the morning to sort specifically those pink tubs. And then as drivers come back, we like to have sorters there from around noon to 5:00 PM, just kind of depending on their availability that day.
I'm gonna combine a couple of questions about sorting and volunteers and delivery. People ask, can they sort in their library? Can I H L S utilize volunteers to sort? Especially potentially college students who might need volunteer hours since the hubs are in college towns.
Okay, currently, we do work with one of the local high schools to, it's a, it's a program. And we have not yet began using volunteers or researched into that. That's something I'll look into. I do know that a concern is the physical amount of work to do with this job. We do require a fit-for-duty exam before people can do the sorting position. So that would be half, that would be a factor we'd have to consider when employing or not employing, but having volunteers do this position. Wasn't there a second question there?
Oh, could they do sorting in their libraries?
Um, I mean, I guess that's an option we could explore, yeah. And I don't know, maybe they can elaborate a little bit more what they mean because I don't know, I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, this one might actually be more for Leslie perhaps is, it's about the procedure for deciding when the hubs are closing. Cause it said, do you consider closing only the delivery hubs affected by bad weather and not all hubs?
Yes, we look at this on a hub-by-hub basis.
Yeah, regarding the most confusing part though is sometimes in the, especially for me, I'm in the Edwardsville hub. For example, Jerseyville area may have different weather than Edwardsville has. And sometimes the routes go to Jerseyville and also go to Edwardsville. And so it's hard to start a route knowing they'll be encountering weather in Jerseyville and where it's gonna be starting and then come back. And that's just a small example, but a lot of the routes are circular routes and they're not necessarily in just one weather zone. So that's where it impacts a lot of our closures is because it may be fine in one city and then three cities down, it's not fine. So that's where it's very difficult to make that decision.
So there were, and then just to clarify, the barcodes will be on the outside of the items with the automatic material handling system?
Correct. As far as the barcode placement, we of course have made a recommendation. We will not make a formal mandate of where barcodes need to be. Just because of the fact that machines will be able to read them anywhere on the outside. I know that's a hot topic and a lot of people have wished to have a formal placement. But that's not something we're going to do at this time. If we will be doing the barcode duplication for you. We are going to choose the recommended placement and we'll put them all in the same exact spot just for ease of being able to know, we won't have to look at which library's items we're looking at whenever we're doing the duplication process. They can process all items at once in the same exact spot. And that information will be available on the survey when that's sent out.
Okay. Yeah, and can you talk a little bit more about the barcoding efforts? What, you know, things do need to be barcoded for the automatic material handling system. Some libraries are concerned about the staff time that that would be for their staff. And so could you just reiterate or expand, expand a little bit?
Yes, so one of the biggest, we realize that's one of the biggest challenges for our member libraries. So that's why we are willing to do the barcode duplication process for you. And that's what part of this survey is for. It, we're providing you the specifics on what we'll be doing if we do it for you. And you can make that choice. And this survey is just for informational desk this time. It's not a formal contract or anything saying that you in fact want us to do it. This is just for us calculating the return on investment portion of it. But what, one thing I do want to point out is that when working with our consultant, he's from Massachusetts and they have implemented a process similar to this. And one thing that a lot of their member libraries didn't realize when they were doing the process is not only are they removing the label. They're also going to see a personnel savings as well because of the reduced amount of time it takes to actually scan that item. Print the barcode label, adhere it to the book or item and then get that. So they're estimating at least a 30-second personnel time savings, both when you're checking it in and checking it out. So I know that seems very minor, but I took, I can't remember which library, it might have been Mount Vernon's maybe materials. One day and I, I calc, or I actually, it was Hayner. I do remember it was Hayner I took. Their items circulated out of their library last year. And I plugged in the number and did an estimate of the person processing their materials was paid $15 an hour. And they saw an annual savings of $11,000 annually by not putting the receipt paper on their materials. So while it is a cost that you may incur for doing the duplication, you'll be seeing a savings. And definitely by not having to put that receipt paper on the materials when they're going out for transit. And another factor I've considered is that currently, those member libraries, when you're sending an item out of deliver, for delivery. You're not paying for that transit paper for your own patrons. You're paying that transit receipt paper for someone else's patron. So it's not really a cost that you're incurring for your patrons. It's a cost for another library because you're doing your good and sharing your materials. So that's another benefit, I think, that you'll be saving on.
Okay, there are a lot of specific questions about, you know, certain libraries or certain material types. So I would assume that Colleen, there'll be more expansive information on the finer details as the plan moves forward.
Absolutely, yes. At this point, we're unfortunately still gathering information and we're trying to treading a fine line between not trying to go too far into all the details, but I want to consider a lot of aspects before we present this to our board. So if there are, if there's information that you want me to provide more of, please reach out to me because it's really helpful for me to know what you're looking for specifically.
Okay, and then Jill asked if that there, wasn't there a big study driven by the state regarding delivery and using a third-party vendor? What were the recommendations from this study?
I'll have to look into that. I'm not aware of a study from a third-party vendor. And do they mean as far as for who would actually deliver materials to the libraries, I'm assuming. I will say that I've been, I'm a member of a group. It's a net nationally group through PLA. And they talk about delivery and a lot of companies who have outsourced their delivery and do not do it within their system have had huge challenges. I know there's a Florida, the Florida system, he was just at their company, that I believe they have to pay $5 an item to be delivered. And so he's now encouraging people to stop inter-library circulation and to just buy the item instead of circulating it. So I don't feel strongly that using a third-party would be the best benefit. I know before with that inter-library, the ILDS night, night swap, that was outsourced previously. And items would just go missing very frequently and they would not show up for sometimes weeks at a time. I was not in the delivery department at that time, but I remember Susan talking about the, it's just ineffective to outsource this. And it is the most cost-effective manner to do it in-house, I believe.
Kate, can I jump in?
Oh, please, yes.
So in answer to the, the original question about a survey or a study that was promoted by the Illinois State Library. There was, you may recall that the year before we transitioned. The year before we had executed the merger. There was a Future of Illinois Library Cooperation Grant that was given to, I believe, ILA. And ILA, as part of that, there were, there were sections for resource sharing in general, interlibrary loan that. And there was a, a big, the biggest thing that came out of the FILK study was a very large committee that met regularly for about a year at the Illinois State Library. And they considered everything. And then they issued every factor of delivery you could ever possibly have, every question you could possibly have that committee discuss. And I was a member of that committee, so I, I remember those conversations. They issued rec, from that, the Illinois State Library issued recommendations for delivery. The study, whether or not there's a study that, there's a preference for third-party vendors or not. I don't believe that that was exactly addressed during the FILK delivery process, that committee process. It wasn't a formal response. It was definitely discussed that the preference for a large majority of the attendees, of members of that committee were to not have a third-party vendor. Does that, Jill, does that answer your question?
Leslie, yes, it does. And I don't necessarily agree that we should have third-party, but it does beg the question of then possibly consider paying people more. If having a third-party vendor means $5 more per item, then you know what I mean, then does it? I don't know, more money entices more people to do the job and third-party vendors aren't the answer. Not sure.
Yeah, thank you. No, those are all great questions. Thank you.
And then we've had a couple of questions coming in about possible, you know, things with delivery. Like, has there been discussion on connecting Illinois delivery to other states?
No, there has not.
And then have you shared the increases in our delivery with the Illinois State Library? Perhaps they can financially help.
I haven't explicitly stated that and maybe we should schedule a specific delivery meeting, yes.
Okay, if I missed your question in the chat, or if you have a specific question, you know, that's highly specific to your library. I do encourage you to reach out directly to Colleen. And then also, we do have, I think, a few more minutes for questions. Colleen, I believe I got to all of the major topics in the chat.
Yep, I'm actually scrolling through right now. I do see one, how are non-share libraries sorted automatically? Just to be clear, no, none of the non-share, any standalones, they will not be able to be sorted through the machine at all. The machine will only be able to sort share member library materials. So when we did the initial analysis of that. The number of standalones that have heavy volume circulation. It was low enough that it was, we were able to still continue to manually sort the standalones. So, and we even actually did a cutoff with this first initial configuration spreadsheet. If you sorted or you sent through delivery less than 10 items per day. We may even continue to manually sort those share member libraries materials or not. We weren't sure. So at this point, we're just saying all share members will be able to be sorted and we're going to determine that information later.
Okay, I don't know if you saw the comment that just came in, and thank you Jill for reiterating that question. Then Leslie says, we do have some, a handful of barcode duplicators that we are using for testing. Cause Jill asked if we had barcode duplicators now. And then there's a comment from Ginger saying, just want to say we are so grateful for the delivery. We are able to offer so many additional titles and resources to our small community because of delivery and our drivers are always so kind and helpful.
Thank you. I can say that Illinois does delivery really well. Yep. I would, especially in meeting with the large national, nationally-wide committee, it's amazing to hear. It's amazing to hear how well our libraries work together in comparison to some other states. So kudos to everybody who does this.
And if people want to volunteer to be some of the first group to test the barcode duplicators, we've seen some things coming in in the chat for that. How should they connect with that?
Please email me. That would be great. I would love to have some member libraries actually test this process as well. Um, I've been working heavily with their share, uh, circulation cataloging staff with that. And, um, it would be really helpful if we could have a member, a couple of member libraries as well help. And I don't know if I mentioned as well, but when we're doing this survey, another option is that we are going to purchase the barcode duplicators and the labels. And give those to libraries as well. So that's an option on the survey as well. It's not that we're going to leave you to have to purchase the machine and the barcodes yourself. We're including that on our return on investment. So that will be an option on the survey as well. But kind of the, the fine line here is how many machines do we actually need to buy? The machines are, are the system to do the barcode duplication process. They're roughly about a thousand dollars apiece. Base scam staff have let us know that you can repurpose them at the end of it. Or, um, like book spine printers, but I don't know how many we want to purchase if we're only going to be using it for this period of time. Um, but we're thinking that maybe at the end of this process, we would keep one at I, one or two maybe at I, each I H L S hub. And then maybe we would offer a grant to our member libraries so that we could give away the barcode duplicators at the end.
And Colleen's email has been put in the chat. Um, I, you can also find it on our I H L S website. Thank you all. There's a lot of other positive comments about delivery. And there's a question that if you are not a share member. What category do you, what library category do you fall in? Leslie, can you answer that one?
I certainly can, Kate. Um, thank you. So every I H L S member library, of which we have over five hundred and twenty at the moment. Has the option to become a share member. And that option entails a cost. That's an individual library by library decision. We do not look at our membership in terms of share members and non-share members. We look at our membership in terms of we have over five hundred and twenty member libraries in our service area. And what particular library chooses. To implement to best serve their patrons is their decision. We, you may have heard in the past, we've referred to libraries who do not participate in share as non-share. Libraries, however, that's a misnomer and that's. That's an appellation we no longer use. So in this situation, when a library, because. When a library is not participating in share, they can be participating in a local, smaller consortium of their own. Many of our libraries are members of Carley, the Consortium for Academic and Research Libraries in Illinois. So we no longer refer to that. So I'm not sure where the reference to other, uh, category is. And I hope that it answered your question.
Then we also have a comment. Um, Robert has had experience with an automatic materials handling system. And he says that he's found increased customer satisfaction along with the increased efficiency and effectiveness. Makes the A M H worth pursuing, especially with the turnaround time. People really enjoyed that. And I think that is all that I see. We've got about five minutes left. If anyone has any questions or comments. Again, if you think of something afterwards, which you know, I think we're all prone to doing sometimes. Please reach out to Colleen and she's happy to connect with you.
Okay, I think we'll end it. Thank you very much, Kate, and thank you for everyone attending. Please reach out to me directly if you have any questions or concerns. I'm happy to hear.
Oh, and Heather, I see your question about will we have access to this recording? Yes, it is being recorded. It will go on our. I H L S YouTube page and, um, we will make sure that everyone who registered with through L two gets an email whenever that. Recording is available.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.